Two thousand and seven, roll call.
Mayor Heitke.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Swenson.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Dawkin.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
Leek.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Thank you, Kevin. It's our practice to begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We have a full city council chambers here tonight. I welcome all the citizens who have taken their time to join us tonight, and certainly, good evening to the citizens who are watching this on our local access television. Tonight, we have, along with the consent agenda, we have a scheduled public hearing to rezone some property and some land. We'll have a message here from a senior staff person in Senator Norm Coleman's office. We also have a visitor from Springstead. Is Kathy in the audience yet?
Not yet.
Not yet. She's on the road. And a variety of committee meeting reports. To begin with, I'll ask our councilmembers if they have any proposed additions, changes, or deletions to the agenda. Seeing and hearing none, we will then go to the consent agenda.
Move to approve, Mr. Mayor. Second.
We have a motion, and it's been seconded for the consent agenda. Tonight, the consent agenda includes minutes from the past city council meeting on May 21st, a special city council meeting that was held before the public meeting, also on May 21st, the hospital board minutes of May 18th, the utilities commission of May 29th, the planning commission minutes of May 23rd and 30th, the airport commission minutes of May 22nd, and the council work session minutes of May 30th. Do any members of the council wish to talk about... Councilmember Reese?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull the May 23rd planning commission minutes.
All right. Anyone else? All right, we will pull those minutes.
Mayor.
Oh, Councilmember Dawkin?
Thank you. I would like to pull the planning commission minutes of May 30th.
And the 30th, all right. Anything else? All right, with those two minutes being pulled, the rest of the consent agenda, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Councilmember Reese?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to refer to item number three, and that's the Earth Tech Energy Conditional Use Permit. And I've got some questions, some concerns. The planning commission previously agreed with the rezoning of this property. And when they did that, they did so knowing what was going to take place, what was going to be built on that piece of property. And Earth Tech Energy was proposing to purchase a larger tract of land, more than what was really needed for the initial project. And they were looking forward to future development. They were planning ahead. There were conditions set. Some of those conditions that were enumerated, one of them was the allowance of a septic system on the property, but also the understanding that if they did any additional development, it would call for connection to our city sanitary sewer service. The only thing that they're going to be serving with the septic system that would be on the property is for the bathrooms at the facility. And they also agreed to provide access to the south for further development for the property that would be directly to the south. And of course, there were a long list of other conditions. And the site plan met all of the conditions. There was a lot of discussion, a lot of concerns from the community expressed in regards to this proposed project by Energy Tech. And whether it's serving on the city council, or on the planning commission, or on our utilities commission, or Rice Hospital Board, the city council, you can go on and you can name them all, it takes a certain amount of courage within a smaller community like this to serve in those capacities. And when you serve in those capacities, many times you face multiple choices in making decisions. And how do you make that right decision? And more often than not, it's a matter of judgment and not necessarily proof. And those judgments can be difficult to be made. When we're faced with these judgments, they have to be based on commitment to the veteran of the community as a whole. And when we face these tough decisions, we're also faced with a certain amount of political pressure. No matter how big or small the city is, there's always political pressure for difficult decisions that have to be made. And that makes the judgment call even harder. And then we have to make the judgment with courage and also integrity to do the right thing regardless of the political pressures that are faced. And tonight, we're faced with one of those decisions. And I, you know, we've got people here from the school board, we've got Mr. Erickson is here, I saw him come in, we've got probably planning commission members, people that are concerned, that have voiced opinions are from the Midwest Technology Campus and surrounding properties. And that doesn't make the decision any easier, but I think we have to have a discussion. And it's this decision of whether or not we pass on planning commission minutes and go ahead with the denial of the opportunity for them to develop the Earth Tech Energy Conditional Use Permit has to be faced here tonight. Wilmer's a growing city. Thankfully, we face these tough decisions. Because I'd rather face these tough decisions than decisions of a dying city. And one of the things that is brought out in the minutes also is that the use of this property is consistent with the... What am I looking for? The overall plan that... Bruce, what was...
Comprehensive.
Comprehensive plan. So I guess I... And I go back to my first statement. When the planning commission looked at it, the original zoning, they knew what was going to be built there, but yet now they've turned it down. And I guess I have some concerns. I don't... You know, what kind of pictures does this paint to other possible developers, industrial developers, any type of economic development within our community, that if they've met the terms and conditions, they agree to those terms and conditions, and yet we... And we knew when we zoned it, what was going to be put there. And now we turn around and we say, no, you can't do it. I do have some concerns about that. I think that's going to make it tough for Mr. Renquist and Bruce Peterson, and our economic development within the community. So I guess that's my concern, and I'd like to have some conversation in regard to that.
Other councilmembers wish to comment on this? Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that was awfully well put, when we start talking about having to make these tough decisions where we have friends and neighbors that are feeling that they're going to be impacted and potentially will be impacted. That makes it really, really tough. Not a fun thing. But I too have a real concern. When we annexed the property, it was zoned industrial. Industry comes in, wants to get a conditional use permit, and for some reason. But I'm not... I've read the minutes, and I've read them several times, and I'm still not clear that I could agree with their findings of fact. So I'm struggling with this one. I'm not understanding what happened at the planning commission meeting that would cause them to change their mind. I'm real concerned that they did change their mind and recommend denial of that conditional use.
Other councilmembers?
Mr. Mayor, I would...
Go ahead, Doug.
I guess Dennis just said something that I had intended on saying. And I do... I also feel that, as I looked at the reasons given in the minutes that are outlined in the planning commission minutes of May 23rd, I don't feel that they're substantial enough to really deny this conditional use permit.
Anyone else?
I guess...
Councilmember Leek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I can agree with Mr. Anderson and Mr. Reese's comments, who are, you know, very well put. I guess I'm not clear as exactly why the conditional use permit was denied at the commission meeting, and would like to have some of those further questions answered, if possible.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I have a question of maybe of staff, of process. What would the procedure be, or the process be to... The planning commission has recommended denial. If the council opts to take a different direction, is that simply a motion to grant the conditional use permit?
Could our city attorney answer that, please?
I think you've got two choices. You can table it and send it back for reconsideration. Second choice would be to simply veto it. That does not create the conditional use permit. It only cancels what they did.
Yeah. Go ahead, Dennis.
Then what... So then we're sitting with nothing?
Correct.
I mean, and if we opt not to send it back to the planning commission and we veto it, where does that leave the business?
Means the issue is still open for them to consider, but you can't constructively do what they refuse to do.
You're saying we can't grant the condition?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Dawkin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I was at the planning commission meeting when this was discussed, and I think Mr. Peterson probably could shed some light on this. My recollection, Mr. Peterson, is that just as the May 30th planning commission meeting, when we were directed to look only at the rezoning, that we have to be able to separate, do we want to rezone it from the use, knowing what the use is, okay? They knew that. And so, what was it again that they were directed to do the planning commission at that meeting relative to use, and to separate for rezoning, and the difference between rezoning and use?
Are you referring to the Earth Tech?
Yes.
When the matter most recently came to the planning commission regarding Earth Tech, the zoning had already been established through the annexation process. So at that point, the commission was to address only the proposed use. The zoning of the site was no longer an issue. That had been determined by council ordinance, by the annexation process, and the planning commission was to do nothing but consider the proposed use of the property.
And were they not told that this was a compatible use out there? And so, wouldn't you suppose that some of the planning commission members probably voted for the rezoning because it was compatible, the potential use that was coming out there?
I won't speak for the commission, but I will state that one of the reasons they gave in recommending the annexation and the industrial zoning was that it was consistent with the comprehensive plan that showed that area as future industrial between the railroad and the bypass.
Well, I didn't support the rezoning, Mr. Mayor, and I certainly wouldn't support overruling the planning commission.
For the audience, Mr. Peterson, who just spoke, is the Director of Planning and Development for the City of Wilmer. Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too fear the message that we're sending to any future industrial development coming into town. They're told they have to jump through these many hoops, and what to do, when to do it, and their timing. And this company spent, I believe it's over a year, year and a half, researching a location that was suitable for them, dollar-wise and for their business. I don't want to lose them. I don't think that's the wrong place to put them, but I still didn't get an answer to the question of where are they if we veto this action taken by the planning commission? Where are they sitting? Do they have to resubmit, or what action course did they take?
Our city attorney will answer.
If you veto it, it's basically dead for six months. But if you send it back for reconsideration, which takes a affirmative vote of six members, then the planning commission can reconsider it.
Are you saying that they have to reapply in six months?
If you do nothing tonight, you just pass the minutes the way they are, yes. If you veto what they did, same answer. The veto really accomplishes nothing, is what it amounts to.
So to us who are interested in this company locating there, then it seems that we should send it back to them. They've already changed their mind once. I suspect they could change their mind again. I think we're sending the wrong message to future development here. I don't agree with the four reasons to deny the request. I think they were all answered by Mr. Renquist quite thoroughly. So I'm for sending it back to them, if that's what it takes to get this company here. I just...
A motion?
Would that be a motion to... Not to table, but to send it back?
To table and send it back. That's what Rich had said.
Table and send it back.
It'd be a motion to send it back to them for reconsideration.
Not to table it, though.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
I'll make that motion to send it back to the planning commission and have them reconsider.
Second.
We have a motion on the table, and it's been seconded, to send this issue back to the city planning commission, for the city planning commission to reconsider their vote on this issue. Further comment from councilmembers? Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm seeking some clarification on the number of affirmative votes that are necessary. My understanding was that it was a... That we would need five votes and not six.
For the motion here?
For the motion in front of us.
Majority vote?
Yeah, five.
The six was for a veto, I believe.
To override a veto.
And I'm confused between the two, and that's why I'm looking for clarification.
Please, Steve, ask a city attorney your question.
Are we looking for an affirmative vote of simply five or six votes? In either case, I guess I'll put the question that way.
I think they're consulting back there.
The zoning ordinance says six out of eight planning... Excuse me, councilmembers must approve the motion to reconsider.
So on the motion on the table right now, Rich, six councilmembers have to vote in the affirmative to send it back?
Correct.
Okay, is that understood? Councilmember Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rich, what kind of timeframe are they under then, if we send it back to them? Do they look at it immediately at their next meeting, or...
The zoning ordinance doesn't specify a time for them to do so. Bruce indicates that they would have to do it within 60 days by state statute.
Because I know this company has been over in Benson now, looking at property. And I received a call from Redwood County this morning. They wanted all the information, because they want them to come down there, too. So it's pretty important for us.
Councilmember Anderson?
Mr. Mayor, I wonder if it would be appropriate for us to amend that, to suggest that the planning commission review that within 30 days? Is that legal?
Yes, I think you can do that.
Do you want to make?
I would make that motion.
An amendment to the motion on the table, that the planning commission reconsider within 30 days?
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, now we have a motion and a second to amend the previous motion, that if the previous motion passes, the planning commission has 30 days to reconsider. Councilmember Reese?
I... Not a question in regards to the motion, but Bruce, what would your feeling be in regards to... You've talked to Earth Tech. How does that fit in their time restraints as far as moving ahead and maybe even considering staying here, or whatever, if it changes?
I don't know that they have what you would call a 100% firm timeframe. I do know time is of the essence. I think from a practical standpoint, when the planning commission finds out that this matter has been referred to them, if that is the action by the council... Rich mentioned the 60-day rule. Within 60 days of having filed their complete application, the City of Wilmer must have made a decision, one way or the other, on this request, or it is automatically approved under state statute. So any delay on the part of the planning commission would serve to create an automatic approval situation.
Well, I guess my concern more was with Earth Tech, and like Rick said, just packing up and moving someplace else.
I know the interest is there.
Okay. All right, we have an amendment to the previous motion. We'll vote on the amended motion. That is, if the first motion passes, the planning commission must deal with this within 30 days. Is that clear? Those in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
The motion passes seven to one. Now we're back to the original motion, and that was the one made by Councilmember Christensen. Is there any more discussion on the original motion? Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to be clear. We're asking them to reconsider this within 30 days.
Right, if it passes.
If it passes here. If they don't, and they don't reconsider it within 60 days, the company gets to go out there.
If they want to.
Correct. If the planning commission does nothing.
Bruce?
It would be 60 days from the date they filed a complete application. So I'm guessing that over 30 days have expired of that 60-day timeframe.
Okay.
So...
I see. Then we should know within two weeks of the reconsideration? Or not? We don't know?
It would be put on the planning commission's agenda, and what the planning commission does with the council's request, I guess, is up to the commission. But if they... I'm guessing it's something they feel strongly enough that they are going to address it at their next meeting.
What if... What if it came back as is now, and we told them to reconsider it again? Is that a possibility, too?
I suppose technically, it's a possibility. I think it becomes kind of pointless.
Well, the 60 days would be up.
Oh, I see. You're...
I want to know all avenues here.
You're playing the calendar game. Okay.
Technically?
Technically, you could force it that way, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, any other comments on the motion on the table? Kevin, can you read the motion so that we're clear here?
The motion is to send the conditional use permit back to the planning commission to reconsider the matter within 30 days.
All right, ready to vote? Those in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
The vote is seven to one. The motion passes. The issue goes back to the planning commission. Councilmember Reese?
Just one more thing with it, going back to the planning commission, Mr. Renquist and Mr. Peterson both being here, I would hope that we could have some discussions with Earth Tech, with the MASTS, prior to that time, to address some of the concerns that were outlined by the planning commission, that hopefully, I don't see them unsurmountable and maybe something that can be dealt with. And hopefully, we can get those points of contention taken care of before the meeting.
I think that's understood by staff. All right, Doug, would you like to make a motion to approve the minutes of May 20... No, to file the minutes of May 23rd?
Yes, I would, Mr. Mayor, the balance of the minutes. Second?
We have a motion and a second to file the balance of the minutes of the planning commission of May 23rd. Any comments about that? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion?
No.
No. The motion is passed on a seven to one vote, and that motion carries. Now I'll go to Mr. Dawkin for the planning commission minutes of May 30th. Mr. Dawkin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, we're at the beginning stages of what we just went through tonight on the 23rd rezone. I attended this meeting, and the public really is... The public in the fourth ward is really not in favor of rezoning the Gash property, because they know what's going to happen. They're going to cite a 16-bed behavioral hospital there. This has been really a disjointed situation from my perspective for a long time. We were first told that they wanted to cite this unit out on West Wilmer Avenue, near the Rice Care Center. And the reason for going out there then was that it was so we could share services. Well, I'm in favor of sharing services. That site didn't work. And so the second site that came up was over on the Kindle Hole property. That site didn't work because of soil conditions. But it wasn't for shared services, it was because it was closer to Woodland Centers. So I'm not sure that we ever really had the facts as to why we picked the first one or the second one. It was the most expensive site, and so now we're going to look at a third site that is about 80 feet from a neighborhood home. Eighty feet. And so I would speak against this rezoning. I don't know how many of you have bothered to read the comments from citizens on the story that was published on the 31st of May, but just let me give you the flavor here of what the folks are thinking out there. This person writes, "For the people who live in the Olina and 11th Avenue area, there is more going on here than is being represented. More than a handful of residents are concerned about this proposed 16-bed facility. Our concerns arise over the fact that as residents of this neighborhood, we were given no more information than what was published in the newspapers a few weeks ago. Six homes received letters from the public meeting about the zoning change, and like you, we heard the informational meeting at the Health and Human Services Building on the radio Wednesday morning, just a few hours before the meeting was to take place. It was also in the paper, so I'm told. It certainly does not appear that anyone truly wants the public to be well-informed. At the zoning meeting, we were told that, quote, 'Maybe two fences could be put up if that would make you people feel better.' Please do not condescend myself or my neighbors. We have a legitimate question and concerns. I do not have an issue regarding the need for the facility used to help the people with mental health issues." Everybody at that meeting stated that fact. It's not the building, it's the location, folks. I am not a hypocrite, nor do I reject change for the, quote, "greater good." I do not believe this type I do not believe this type of facility belongs in a residential neighborhood eighty feet from people's homes, close to the YMCA, a city park that is actually used and enjoyed by the kids around here. The fact that you have to sell, in quotes, the idea that twenty-seven video cameras, a couple of fences, a twenty-four-hour lockdown, and some shrubs to provide privacy should give me and my neighbors complete peace of mind proves my point exactly. We should not have to be sold on this facility. There are no guarantees that in the future we will not see more beds being utilized. Sexual predators will not be sent here for treatment, the list goes on and on. Who will guarantee that criminals will not receive treatment here? My question is this. If people receiving treatment here are nonviolent, non-threatening individuals, then why the need for cameras, the fence, and a twenty-four-hour lockdown? Someone is not telling the whole truth, and it should not be at the expense of the people living in this neighborhood. I believe there is a better solution, and I also believe that both the residents of this neighborhood as well as the patients receiving treatment at this proposed facility deserve to be treated with respect. Now, I think that says it all, folks. And so, do we want to rezone this tonight, knowing that we've got the, the spot supposedly is picked out? When we all, as I said a year ago almost, there is free land that the public already owns, the taxpayers already own. Why are we buying land? I asked, how come it can't, or why must it be a standalone facility? We've never gotten from Mr. Church and his folks an answer to that, and I asked that question, Mr. Mayor, in January at our retreat. We've never been told as to why. We also know that there are going to be other facilities that could be paired, and we could share service at some point in time. We have sixty acres that we're going to buy for a dollar, for public uses only. Why in the world are we not looking at that? So I don't support this rezone.
Councilmember Dawkins, I'd like to point out that the process involved here is that we've not even had a public hearing yet on this issue.
Right.
A public hearing has not even been scheduled. So the people who are concerned about this will be given ample opportunity to present their views and comments at the public hearing. The council tonight will, will need to establish a public hearing. So we're not voting on whether or not this project is approved or denied tonight.
We're going to vote on the zoning.
No.
No.
We're setting a hearing. We're setting a hearing.
Later on. Well, eventually, it's going to go to the zoning, so.
On number thirteen. I, I think you're way ahead of the process here. This is, tonight is not the decision-making time. Tonight is the time to set a public hearing.
The public is really behind in the process. They should have been talked, this should have been talked about a year ago, a year and a half ago, these meetings, not now.
Well, that's your opinion.
Right.
And I think you have made, you know, this meeting is on public television, you've made it clear to the public what the issues are. From your point of view, from your point of view, I don't think all people hold that point of view, and it's time to set a public hearing and invite people to come and make their comments. But not tonight. Not tonight. Thank you for, that article you just read, was that in the newspaper or was that signed by somebody?
It was in the newspaper.
In the newspaper, all right. Thank you. Anything else on the minutes of the May thirtieth Planning Commission meeting that you want to talk about?
No, sir.
Okay, do you want to make a motion to file those minutes?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to file the Planning Commission minutes of May thirtieth. Any other comments about that? Those in favor of filing the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. We have now completed the consent agenda, and we will move to the first scheduled public hearing tonight, and this public hearing is now open. This is to consider an ordinance to rezon certain property from residential four to residential two. It's called the Skogstad property. And Bruce, can you introduce this and tell us what this is all about?
Mayor Heike, members of the council. The city received an application from Dawn Skogstad to rezon property she owns in Parkview Estates from R4, which is a medium-density multifamily zoning classification, to an R2, one- and two-family residential classification. She proposes the development of single-family housing on that site. About a year ago, the owner of the property actually had the property rezoned from an R3 to an R4 because they were looking at a higher-density classification. Since that time, their desires have taken a different direction, and they have done an about-face, and hence want to reduce the density at this time, which the neighborhood, quite frankly, had no negative comments with regard to reducing density. The Planning Commission approved the rezoning request and forward it to the council. It's a recommendation of staff that the ordinance be adopted, assigned a number, and published.
Thank you, Bruce. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to ask any questions or make any comments about this proposed ordinance about the Skogstad property? Now's the time to ask questions or make any comments. Seeing and hearing none, the public hearing is now closed, and the matter comes up to the city council table. What would the council members wish to do?
Move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this proposed ordinance that be adopted, assigned a number, and published. Any other comments about this? Roll call.
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes, the ordinance is adopted. Oh, let me see here. We're on number eight on the agenda, which is, has to do with Springstead, and I see that our guest has arrived here. This has to do with the sale of $1,725,000 general obligation improvement bonds. Mick, would you like to make a comment, please?
I will, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Councilmembers, this is our second bond issue for the year with regard to street improvements. You know, our first one, you recall, kind of covered the southeast part of the city where we were doing all of that development activity down by the south and east of the Candy Mall area. This project focuses more on our traditional street reconstruction activity and things of that nature. Kathy Yoho, president of Springstead, is with us tonight to share with us the results of the recent bidding process, and then you will be asked to consider a resolution accepting the offer, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Welcome, Kathy.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. While the bid tabulations are being distributed there, just a comment. We were in the market with you in March, and the city's A1 rating was affirmed at that time. With this transaction, we did request a rating affirmation, and again, the city's rating was affirmed at an A1, so congratulations on that. That's an excellent rating. The bids were taken today, we received three bids. They're presented on the yellow sheet that was just distributed. The low bid was received by Cronin and Company and UBS Securities at a 4.0696%. That's a little higher than what we had in the recommendations, just by .14%. The market has moved up a little since that time, but it's still very attractive. We would recommend that you accept the bid of Cronin and Company. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Otherwise, I believe that there's a resolution in front of you that has been prepared by bond counsel for your consideration.
Thank you, Kathy. Councilmembers, is there anyone who wishes to ask any questions about this or make any comments? Councilmember Reese.
Move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Cronin and Company Incorporated for this bond issue at the true interest rate of 4.0696%. Any comments about the motion? I have a question, Kathy. Does it surprise you that there are only three bidders on this? We've had, in the past, we've had many more bidders.
It did a little bit in light of the fact that you had ten at your sale earlier in March. It can be a function of what else is in the market. The smaller the issue size, that tends to attract fewer bidders at some point. Three is still a representative number. If you look at the lowest bid compared to the highest bid, there's less than $10,000 of total interest cost difference between them, so fairly tight bidding, and we feel it's representative of where the market is.
All right, thank you. Any other comments here?
One question, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember DeBleek.
For repayment of these bonds, are we guaranteeing our tax capacity rate, or how is that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember DeBleek, the bonds are general obligation bonds, so the full faith and credit of the city is pledged to those bonds, which means that in the event that, that it's necessary, levies will be made to support the bonds. In fact, the finance plan did have a portion of the bonds supported by tax levies. The balance was supported by roughly $870,000 worth of assessments that are levied against benefited properties. So those assessments with their interest will help defray some of the cost of this bond transaction.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You use the term "where the market is," what does that mean?
And, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Dawkins, the municipal market, the tax-exempt market moves somewhat in conjunction with the taxable market. And so as the taxable market has moved up a little bit, the tax-exempt rates have moved up a little bit. The interest rates that are bid here are consistent with what we're seeing for this similar-type credit in the marketplace. There are very good statistics available online in terms of what else is being, what other rates are being bid for similar credits that we're able to track.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Is the council ready to vote on this? We have a motion that's been seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Kathy, thank you for your.
Thank you.
Quick trip out here for the good news, thank you. Next on the agenda is number nine, and this is to receive some comments from Mr. Carl Kuhl. Mr. Kuhl is in Senator Norm Coleman's office, and I am very pleased to have him here. I think he has some very good news for the city of Wilmer. Carl? Carl, would you tell us where you're from and how long you've been with the senator?
I certainly will, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, thank you for having me here this evening. I am here to bring some good news. First, I'll tell you a little bit about myself. I do business, economic, and some of the financial work in Senator Coleman's office, including some of the transportation and overall infrastructure projects here in the state of Minnesota. I work out of the main office in St. Paul. Spend quite a bit of my time on the road, so most of my time is traveling.
Thank you. Now, the good news.
The good news, Senator Coleman has sent me with a letter, I'll read first, and then I'll give you a little background on where things are at with the Water Resource Redevelopment Act. Dear Mayor and citizens of Wilmer, congratulations on receiving authorization for federal funding for the city of Wilmer's wastewater treatment facility project. The Water Resource Development Act authorizes $15 million to the city of Wilmer and will help to cover substantial amount of the construction costs of the facility and supporting infrastructure. The authorization in the Water Resource Development Act will enable the city of Wilmer to receive financial assistance from the Army Corps of Engineers. I learned about the need for a new wastewater treatment plant through different meetings that I have had with Mayor Heike and other city officials from Wilmer, both in Wilmer and in Washington, D.C. As a former mayor, I understand the need and importance of infrastructure in communities. I commend Mayor Heike for your efforts in addressing this issue. Your work in recognizing and addressing the issues will help to improve water supply for the city of Wilmer while preserving one of Minnesota's precious natural resources. I was very happy to do my part as senator in helping the city of Wilmer and surrounding communities in this endeavor. Congratulations again, sincerely, Norm Coleman. The Senate passed the Water Resources and Redevelopment Act about three weeks ago. Excuse me. About three weeks ago, the House had passed theirs a few weeks before that. The House passed what is called a clean bill, meaning it didn't have very many project identifications within the bill. The Senate's bill included project IDs. Water Resource Redevelopment Act is a, generally a four-year reauthorization that's done for the Army Corps of Engineers. It's been about six years since we've done one. What the bill does is authorizes the Army Corps to seek funding or to utilize their yearly allocation to fund projects in different communities. So this project then is in the Senate bill, not currently in the House bill. The two bills will be reconciled in conference committee here in the coming months. Actually, we're hoping weeks, and then a final bill will be voted on by both chambers. Can take any questions if you'd have them.
Well, Carl, that's outstanding news. Councilmembers, do you have any questions or comments here? Councilmember Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Carl, welcome, and thank you for coming out here. Which, does this go into conference committee or is it currently within, within a House committee, or it's passed out of both bodies now?
It's been passed out of both bodies. We're just waiting for ConFrees, for the conference committee to be announced.
So they haven't, okay.
And begin working, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Councilmember Reese.
Carl, great news, thank you. City of Wilmer thanks Senator Coleman, and you carry the thanks back to him. We, we're anxious to move ahead on our wastewater treatment plant and meet all of the conditions that both the state and the federal government have placed on our discharge, and we really want to build a plant that's going to meet all of those conditions, and we appreciate the assistance from the federal government.
Well, we'll certainly relay those messages to the senator. Would also just like to expound on that a little bit in some of the additional work that we've been doing in Senator Coleman's office in regards to infrastructure, specifically wastewater infrastructure, water infrastructure, and rural broadband, and a piece of legislation the senator has introduced again this year, the Rural Renaissance Act, which would allow the federal government to issue bonds. Those bonds then, the funds received from those bonds then to be allocated to cities for grants to continue to upgrade wastewater, water treatment, and broadband infrastructure.
Anyone else? Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming out, Carl. You said it was a four-year bill, does that mean that we would get our, if we get our money, we would get it over that four-year period, or?
Sure.
In the first of the four years? And if we get it the first of the four years, can we reapply again? Because we have a, we have failed technology, and it's causing a problem, you know, so.
This bill allocates, authorizes, excuse me, $15 million worth of funding for the city of Wilmer to be used in the wastewater treatment, treatment facility project. The authorization gives the Army Corps the ability to fund the project either through their general fund, their yearly funding, or would then make it easier, if you will, for direct appropriation during appropriations bills. So the bill does not technically deliver a check to the city of Wilmer, but it delivers the authorization. Once it's authorized by the Army Corps, generally those projects happen within the four years.
So we would have to use it over the four-year period then, is that what you're saying?
The funds would be delivered to the city of Wilmer through the Army Corps. You'd work with the Army Corps through the process, and they would make the funds available as they're available to the Army Corps.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the council? Couple of questions, Carl. When this funding, this federal funding comes attached to the Army Corps of Engineers, does that put any new conditions for us here in Wilmer about the development of the plant, or the authority of the plant, or anything like that? You know, the fact that this is a different funding stream than what we've had in the past, does that change any conditions out here?
It should not. To the best of my knowledge, I do not believe that it would. I, I don't know exactly, but I do not believe that word changes any of the language on how it is, you know, what type of project and the exact rules that need to be followed to access the funds.
Okay, and I'm going to ask Mr. Craig Holmes in a second, not yet to think about that, but I don't, I'm not sure that we've had a project out here that the Army Corps of Engineers has, has taken the leadership on. I think this is all kind of a new funding system. Mel, is that correct? Okay. The second question then, I very much appreciate what Senator Coleman has done to lead in putting.
putting this funding into the proper type of legislation. How solid is that in terms of going to conference committee? And is it possible that something could change or come out different in conference committee than what the senator is trying to do?
Before I answer that question, I'd like to jump back to the last one just to clarify and have a better understanding. I would guess that the vast majority of your projects have been funded by USDA in the past. There may be some differences between USDA guidelines and Army Corps. I would assume that they are very similar. There would not be massive differences, but I could not speak to that exactly. There may be some slight technical differences in the way the two organizations operate. To answer your question about how solid the funding is, it's our understanding that the majority of the projects that came out of the Senate bill will be included in the overall bill. There may be additional projects. Nothing is ever set in stone when you're dealing with Congress or any legislative body. However, it is our sense that the projects that are included in the Water Resource Development Act from the Senate bill will more than likely be included in the final bill.
All right. And then Craig, could you use that microphone? Is there anything you want to ask Carl about this? Or you probably have been in conversation, but Craig Holmes is our local engineer from Donahue and Associates who's handling the wastewater treatment plant.
Our experience with the core programs is it kind of varies kind of all over the board. The Army Corps is a constructing agency, and as such, they can assume a greater role, but in some projects, they support by funding. And oftentimes, when they do that, that funding is paid to communities and grantees in a way to reimburse costs. So I think it's really premature to know exactly how it'll function. Our project being in better than halfway through design at this point is different than a project that is just entering the planning phase. So I think it's absolutely fantastic news. I mean, this is the type of funding that we were looking at to kind of pull things together for us, and it means the world to Wilmer, and we'll make it work.
Good, thank you, Craig. Anyone else on the council? I would again echo comments from the council members that please extend our appreciation to Senator Coleman for his leadership in helping the city of Wilmer by finding federal funding to help us on our biggest public works project we've ever undertaken here. So Carl, thank you for coming out and sharing that news with us, and tell the senator, we'll be back out to see him off and on in Washington, D.C.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the council members, if they wouldn't object, that we pass a resolution that a letter be drafted to Senator Coleman and thanking him for his help in finding federal funding for this wastewater treatment plant project.
Move.
Do we have a motion in a second for such a letter to be drafted? Any other comments? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Mick, you'll take care of that. Thank you. Carl, you're welcome to stay, but if you need to step out and hit the road, we understand. Next is number 10 on the agenda, which is the West Central Integration Collaborative Work Program update, and we have with us Charlie Loydsey, who is our diversity coordinator for the schools and businesses, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. By the way, I enjoyed the Cinco de Mayo celebration on Saturday.
Oh, good.
On June, what was the date on that?
Second.
Was it Saturday or Sunday?
Saturday. Saturday.
Saturday, June 2nd. So I was glad to see that finally take place, that the weather had kind of settled out. Charlie, welcome, and tell us about your work.
Mayor and city council members, the work of the cultural liaisons is very important, but sometimes it's misunderstood or not understood quite well. So it is my hope that by having this report, take your time, read it, that you can understand it better. We do play a vital role here in the community, and our biggest focus, I would say, is to assess the cultural competency or appropriateness of services, and that we also work towards enhancing economic development. And the highlights for this past year, of course, we continue with the Wilmer area multicultural market, and some of the big, I would say, positive things that have happened were the, we received three grants from three different foundations, or I should say, two foundations and one organization. Hundred thousand we received from Blue Cross and Blue Shield, 60,000 from Bremmer. And obviously, the reason we received these dollars is because they really believe in this project. And if they do not believe it, I don't think we would have that kind of money. The other money that we received is from the Latino Economic Development, and that is from the Twin Cities. And Robert Valdez is here, and he certainly can speak more on that if you're wondering what all that is about, and they gave us about $15,000. And all of that, all those dollars are used for general operation expenses or costs. And then the other thing that you need to know is Lourdes was gone for a little bit last year, and now she's back, and so now we have two multicultural market coordinators full-time. And believe me, there's plenty of work for more people. Robert is busy right now setting up the capital campaign. There's some other highlights that I bullet pointed there, but the next one that I believe was a big one also was our community was chosen by the Northwest Area Foundation, that's on page four, to host the RAESA's project. And in your packet of information, I gave you a newsletter from our community, and it's both in English and Spanish, so don't be, don't get concerned if you put it on the Spanish side and you can't read it, Steve. Turn it the other way. It's on there. And that's a big deal. The Northwest Area Foundation or RAESA supports people by organizing, providing trainings, technical assistance, resources, some small grants. So for example, some of these, like the Cinco de Mayo celebration that we had, that you attended, I'm sure some of it was funded by them. And then there are some other things that we do in our community where they also give us some small dollars. And then the other one, the Skills to Action, we had the first Skills to Action folks graduate in January 2006, and now there is, I think Steve Gardner here is going to graduate, or did you graduate from the second one? So we had 40 graduates on the first group, and out of that, we started up something called the Cultural Action Alliance, and the mission of the Cultural Action Alliance is to enhance cultural understanding and cohesiveness through education, information, and advocacy. And then after that, I go on and talk about technical assistance and the sorts of services that we have provided to certain communities and then to certain organizations and the description of those services. And of course, the other big highlights were we were featured on NBC Nightly News with Brian Williams, and I don't remember how many people we reached, but...
Forty million.
Forty million, there you go. Isn't that great? And then also, we were on Newsweek magazine, thanks to the Wilmer's cross-country team, and you can read the rest after that. And then in conclusion, I would just like to say it's wonderful work. It is lonely work because rural communities do not have the greater diversity compared to metropolitan areas, but, and there is certainly much less tolerance for diversity, but I certainly am grateful for this town and this city and your support. It has been just wonderful, and thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
And I'll take any questions. We are doing data graphs, and those will be added later. The person that takes care of that was ill last week and didn't see him today, but we'll add those later so that you can get a better sense of how many communities we do reach outside of our community. And you need to know that those requests from other rural communities have been increasing, so they're also starting to see the changing demographics in those communities, so they want to know how to do it, or what can we help them with. Any questions?
Councilmembers, any questions or comments? Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Charlie, thank you for your report. I'm more concerned that I get it read right-side up than I am which language. Just speaking briefly about Skills of Action, I know that Mick has been through that, and this year, in addition to myself, Chief Colsette and Officer Feld went through the training. I believe there may have been one or two others from the city, but it was really interesting to see all the different folks from all the different backgrounds and certainly the differences, but the similarities in that you look at our community as a whole, and by and large, everybody just wants to get ahead, take care of their families, live their lives out, work, play, worship as they choose. And I don't know if you can speak to this or not, and I don't have it in front of me. I apologize, I'd forgotten that you were going to be here tonight, but there's actually some sort of little playdate coming up here, and maybe Roberto knows more about that than I do, but...
June 16th?
I think that's what.
Where we have the folkloric group coming out from the Twin Cities or some...
I know.
Oh, you're June 10th.
Okay.
You, my one, he's the one that organized it, so. Can he, may he speak?
Please.
I sent out an email today, and it's Blandin...
Roberto, would you introduce yourself first?
My name is Roberto Valdez. I don't have to give my address, do I?
No.
What's your position in the community?
I'm the WAM Coordinator, Wilmer Area Multicultural Market, and what Steve is addressing is a picnic that the Blandin Foundation Group and the Skills to Action Group teamed up together, and we're inviting everybody just to come, and a potluck, a Minnesota thing, we're incorporating it, and to bring out your families. We really do incorporate ourselves in committees, in events that are held at night, but I think families play a big, big role in a lot of our, in our gatherings, but children are never included. So this was a way, as our summers are very limited up here in Minnesota, so while this Blandin Foundation Group is getting together these next three months, we're going to have, hopefully, a picnic every month for whoever wants to come out there with their families, have an event. This time, it's going to be kickball, something that everybody can participate in, and how I said, it's a potluck. I will be providing the hearty part, the homemade fajitas and chicken and things like that, but everybody's welcome to come, and it's a way for us just to play together. The idea or the theme, let's get together to play, came from somebody making a comment on how they adopted a child, and this child looked different in appearance, had no, didn't speak the language, but went over to the neighbor's house and played all day long with the neighbor kids, and that never became an issue, you know? So we're bringing it back to maybe let's, that way of thinking, and let's just play together, you know? And so that's what we're doing right now. June 10th, 3 to 7, Robins Island, and if it rains, we have the leaf shelter. So anybody's welcome to come.
Roberto, thank you, and you had me at, I'm bringing the fajitas.
Yeah, okay.
We'll see you out there. Thank you.
Any other comments for Charlie? Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This maybe is more toward Roberto, but first of all, I want to thank Charlie for the report and for all she's done. Can you bring us up a little more to speed on WAM? What the prognosis is, where we stand, when we're going to know if this is going to get off the ground or not?
I want to know when it's going to get off the ground too here, soon, so. Actually, today, we had a meeting with Teresa Weddenberg from the Director of the YMCA. I have no prior capital campaign experience, so I'm bringing her in as a player, and she's going to be a facilitator in our next meeting, which is on Wednesday at 2:00. And we're really going to shoot out a timeline. People have been asking for this timeline to see something happen, but this is a good time to kind of announce this, because without everybody's support in this community, this is not going to get off the ground, to be honest with you. So we really need everybody's support. This is not nothing that Lourdes or Roberto or Kathy or Charlie can do on our own. This is something for the community of Wilmer, and we all need to contribute either time, I mean, in a way to get it off the ground. We are focusing strictly on the capital campaign, but everything ties into it. Our marketing committee, our entrepreneurial, everything ties into it, and I have a very committed marketing committee. We have the brochures done, we have the information in there. We've been going around town. We had pictures picked out from the internet, and now we're getting real pictures from the House of Jacobs, from El Mercadito, I mean, from everybody, so everybody is taking part, and so we're promoting it, and we're gearing up. Hopefully, our lunch day we had put for September 7th, for September of 2007, we're hoping that if recruiting goes good and on the prospecting part of, anybody that's familiar with campaigning, hopefully, it'll be in the middle of August. So that kind of gives you an idea on how we want to set it off this year.
Good, thank you.
Anyone else? Charlie, I also wish to thank you for not only your report tonight, but just your overall work on a year-round basis in the community. One of the most enjoyable events that I have seen and participated in is the Cultural Fair, which happens every two years at, is it Kennedy? Is that the right school? At Kennedy Elementary School. So it was 2008, the next one, February of 2008, and at the last one, we had several thousand visitors, children coming in from other communities to participate in the event, and I believe we had somewhere in the range of about 35, 37 different cultures represented at the Wilmer Area Culture Fair. So looking forward to the next one, and thanks to you and your staff and your volunteers for the work that you do. All right, I think it looks like we're done with our questions at the table here. Thank you very much. We'll move on then. The next item on the agenda is number 11. That's the Wilmer City Council Open Forum. This is the opportunity for anybody from the audience who wishes to address the council on an issue or make a statement, you are welcome to do so. Does anybody in the audience wish to address the council? Warren, please come up. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Warren Erickson, Energy Concepts, P.O. Box 628, Wilmer, office address 1607, Upper Trentwood Circle, Northeast here in Wilmer. Let me start off by one comment. I feel frustrated. I feel frustrated with how the system operates. Just a little background, and I know I'm only supposed to have three minutes, so excuse me if I go a little bit longer.
That's fine.
But when this came about through the Planning Commission, the mass property being annexed in, I got a call from someone on the Planning Commission after the first hearing. Eventually, I went to the other meetings. I got frustrated. Today, I was out on a golf tournament for Bremmer, a charitable thing. I started getting calls about 4:00 that the city council was going to consider overriding the decision made by the Planning Commission. I understand, I'm intelligent enough to understand whatever was done in the Planning Commission, what the city council is doing is legal, but I get so frustrated, because here I feel my, I'm a halfway intelligent individual, and we have to hear stuff through phone calls and that, that no one has, for lack of a better word, the courtesy to call up and say, Warren, you know, this is going to be held tonight, you know, or some, for lack of a better, better public notice. Mr. Reese, I apologize for this, but I take exception to your comment, what you made at the very beginning, where the Planning Commission should have known what was going on. I do not agree with that. At the meeting, when I came to this city council and the annexation was being held, the mayor made it specifically known, this was strictly an annexation hearing, it had not to do with the type of business that was going in there. Now, if I'm wrong in that, I'll stand corrected. So you have the feeling that we should know this, or that the Planning Commission should have known the mass property was going in there, and this is what they wanted to do. We could use that same argument tonight about the state hospital facility or whatever, you know? So I think that's where us as citizens sometimes get frustrated with government. It seems like, you know, you're pushing your own agenda, and you're not really listening to us. You allow us to get up for our three minutes, or the two minutes that you're going to extend it to me for three minutes, and that's fine and set, done. You know, I made this comment at the last council meeting. I have nothing against the... I had nothing against the annexation. I'd rather have the city control it rather than the county, for whatever reason. I have my own reasons, but I'm not gonna express them here. I would challenge everyone that sits on this City Council to come to the next Planning Commission when they are gonna hear from the citizens and to hear. I do have a little concern that the minutes that you read from that Planning Commission were put together by city staff. I don't know if that's always the best thing. I have a tape from the Planning Commission... Excuse me. I have a tape from the last City Council member minutes on the annexation. I do have a copy when Mr. Renquist and Mr. Peterson spoke this a week ago, tomorrow night, at the School Board meeting regarding the mass property and the schools' concern. I would challenge... I would like to see an independent party come to the next Planning Commission meeting when this is gonna be held and take independent minutes and to give those to those members that sit up in front of me so they can review those independently. But I'd rather have you at that meeting to hear the concerns that the Warren Ericksons, the School Board, and everyone has. And again, I'll come back and set what I did at the... This meeting about a month ago. I have nothing against the annexation. I have nothing against the mass property going out there, per se. But when I look at some of the things that I feel they're able to circumvent as far as the septic and different things. And I think Mr. Peterson did a very good job at the last Planning Commission meeting when the Planning Commission went through the seven steps, I believe, and to make sure that every individual item that they looked at, that they were addressing those correctly and they were not denying them on emotions or anything, but on actual legal... I don't know if legal is the correct term, but points that they had the right to do it. Now, I fully understand that you sit up here and you're elected, whereas the other ones are appointed, that you have to represent the city. But I still, I come back, I challenge you. I would love to see each one of you at that Planning Commission meeting. And I'll guarantee you, you will see more than 20, 30 people there and hopefully, you'll listen to what everyone has to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Warren, for your comments. Anyone else wish to address, please?
Good evening. My name is Steve Salzer. I'm the General Manager for MinWest Technology Campus.
Welcome, Steve.
So of course, I appreciate you listening to me tonight. We are in opposition to the development of the land next to the campus. We're not so much worried. We would welcome earth tech to this community with open arms. I certainly feel they belong in this community and I think we can find a home for them, but we just don't know if it's the proper place there. Our concern is, what's gonna happen in the future with that land? I mean, if we put one company there, we might be okay, but what happens when we put another one in another one in another one? Pretty soon, we have 10 industrial facilities next to the campus. You know, we've been in business for 16 months and we've invested $6 million. So it's a little concerning to me to think, do we invest another $6 million, not knowing what we're gonna have for neighbors and what's gonna happen? Pretty soon, is there trains running there? The traffic, the smells? So we get a little concerned with what's gonna happen with the land over there. So we just would ask that you think into the future. I mean, the community, the state, the county, all supported MinWest to come out. And I think you realize the number of jobs and high-tech companies that will be coming. So we hope you keep that in mind and don't forget that for the sake of one company, perhaps because the industrial park out west is not quite ready and they may fit in this spot. We would just ask that you consider that for the long, well, future. Okay?
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Warren, please come on up.
My name is Wayne Lenzmeyer. I live at 2820 Fairway Drive. I'm also a member of the Wilmer School Board. And I would like to express my concern as to about a quarter mile of the Civic Center Drive where these trucks would be delivering and going out for... To get more loads. And kid, the speed limit there is 50 miles an hour. And those trucks are never gonna go more than 20 miles an hour or thereabouts in that quarter mile to make a turn. And I understand how teenage drivers drive because I was one. And in those days, we did things that... Well, we won't talk about that. But I have a great concern about the safety issues there. And I know that the statement was made that they would coordinate the movement of the trucks to coincide with the timing of the school opening and the school closing. But you have people moving along there all hours of day and particularly at night when they come back from activities and you have activities at the high school. And I have a great concern about kids going 50 miles an hour and coming upon a truck that's probably going 20. And I... You know, the single egress that you have there and ingress, you don't have a whole lot of room there. And if, in fact, this does become a reality, I was... It was indicated to me that the company would work with the school to coordinate. And when you get independent truckers, they don't always coordinate with the company or the school because they're there to make money. And I understand that. And if this is to become a reality, then I would certainly expect the new pellet plant to have their feet held to the fire when it comes to the movement of trucks and what would happen on that drive. And I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Wayne. Kathy? Good evening, Kathy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Kathy Liedem, Superintendent for the Wilmer Public Schools. Our offices are located at 611 Southwest 5th Street. I am here tonight, of course, representing the interests of the Wilmer Schools as well. We certainly appreciate and endorse any economic vitality that can be a part of Wilmer. Our own future is directly connected to the economic viability that we have here and we fully understand that. And I think as a rule, we're just very supportive of any of the initiatives that are out there. But I'm also here to speak on behalf of and for the students and parents that are a part of our school system. We have over 1,300 students at the Wilmer Senior High School. I've often been told by law enforcement that we're the second-largest city in Kandui County during the day out at the Wilmer Senior High School campus. And we would ask you to really pause and think about whether or not that is the appropriate place for industry. We're very cognizant of the fact that that Civic Center Drive corridor has always had as a part of its planning, light industrial development. And we have a different picture in our mind of what light industrial development is compared to this type of an operation. I agree with you and I think many of our representatives from the district would agree that this would be a great business to have in our community. But the question remains, why there and why not really working towards fast-tracking the development of the industrial park? We have high hopes for that property. And I don't pretend to know all the ins and outs regarding getting that property ready for industry. And Mr. Peterson and Mr. Renquist did a great job at our School Board meeting last week outlining a number of the parameters surrounding development. And they did mention that the industrial park is not ready for this business at this time. But the question remains, why not put all of our energy and resources into making that ready? Because we are wanting to attract additional businesses. We don't wanna lose out to other communities. We want to be front and center and ready to go. So that would be sort of an unanswered question that remains. But by and large, we have concerns about the traffic and about the presence of a major industry, you might say, in a school setting. So this isn't any kind of a selfish request. It really is a request for consideration of our young people and our families. There's a lot of traffic at all times of the day and most evenings, for that matter. And we would just respectfully request that you consider that and possibly entertain another option for still including this business in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Anyone else wish to address the council tonight? Dan, come on up. Welcome.
My name is Dan Riggs. I live at 1800 Lower Trentwood Circle. That's a property that is the west of the proposed mass development. Councilman Reese, I wish you had been to the Planning Commission meeting several weeks ago. You would've heard full well the concerns that the people in the area had for the development. There are lots of reasons that have been stated. You know, Kathy Liedem has talked about safety. That certainly is something. I'm gonna speak a little bit about property value. I live in a new development there. That development will not make it if that becomes an industrial site out there. It will not make it. The people who live there are opposed to this new industrial site. They're opposed to the mass development out there. And I think you need to have the courage... You need to have the courage to make the right decision about this property. You need to have the courage to listen to the people who have concerns. I've been concerned tonight, and I was concerned when I first saw the council talk about the annexation of this property. I'm concerned about the rush that everybody is making to get this property developed by mass. What does anybody know about this company? They don't... They aren't from the community, as far as I know. But there is a rush to get them there. Instead, I think you should have the rush, put it on a fast track, like Kathy Liedem has said. Let's get our old... Let's get our industrial park developed quickly. But have the courage, have the nerve to listen to your constituents. Have the nerve and the courage to listen to the people who have concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan, for your comments. Steve? Welcome, Steve.
Steve Renquist, 3106 Eagle Ridge Drive West. I work for the Economic Development Commission in town and I guess we're the ones that have probably worked with the mass longest. In the process that we're now entering into, I am glad so many other people have invited the council to come to the Planning Commission meeting when this is discussed. I hope you all do. I think we as either elected or appointed officials in Wilmer, we've got a city to grow. And what you'll hear by and large, you'll hear a large number of people that will be protesting due to protecting their own individual self-interests. Now, whether it be a large property or whether it be a single property, now, I'm not saying that we shouldn't consider that and certainly we should. But when it comes down to it, we've got the economy of the city to grow and we've got the area to grow now. We'll hear people talk about safety. We'll hear people talk about housing values. We'll hear people talk about how we should move it to the new industrial park. The new industrial park will be partially ready in '08, mostly ready in '09. It will not have rail access unless we spend what I've estimated to be around $2 million to put rail siding into the industrial park. And I doubt very much whether the city at this time will be looking at spending their rail siding. When we talk about safety issues, we'll find out that the school, for instance, was located in its present location when the Wilmer Regional Treatment Center had between 500 and 800 employees, all of them driving cars or car-pulling out to work. Certainly, a significant amount of traffic versus what'll be 20 trucks the first year and estimated to be no more than 70 trucks. There's a lot of factors that'll be talked about. Some of us at that meeting will talk about it in a motion and others will talk based on facts. And I'm hoping the final decision, whether to locate this facility and allow it to build in Wilmer and continue our industrial resurgence, is a decision that's based on facts. Is there any questions before I leave?
No, Steve. This is for the public to address at council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else wish to speak to the council? The purpose of the public forum is to receive statements and comments. Council does not usually make any motions or make any decisions at the time of the public forum. Matters can be referred to committees and council is certainly is free to do what they wish. So councilmembers, is there anyone who wishes to do anything at this point? Councilmember Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for the attorney, Mr. Ronnie. Can we all attend the Planning Commission at the same time?
As long as proper notice is given, certainly.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right. I wish to thank the citizens for their comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Dacken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I make an observation?
Sure.
Thank you. I doubt that we would be having this discussion tonight if the rail spur did not exist out there. And we need to be about getting the rail spur at the new industrial park. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Jim. Anything else? Again, I want to thank the citizens for their comments and their taking your personal time to come here tonight. It is appreciated. The invitation has been extended rhetorically for the council to attend the Planning Commission meeting. I'm sure many of them will. I'm not sure if everybody will, but I'm sure several councilmembers will be there in attendance. Mick? Anything? All right. I think that's enough for tonight. We're gonna take a five-minute recess and we'll come back to the City Council business. No, she's here. We are reconvening the City Council meeting after a short recess. We're down to number 12 on the agenda, which is the Public Works Safety Committee Report for May 29th. Councilmember Reese?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on the agenda was Bev Dougherty from the Wilmer Design Center was at the committee with a request to apply for a transportation grant and which would help us to add to the trail system at the corner of Ella and the First Street Bridge. They presented a concept of the refin... Of the trail and the area and that intersection and as far as what they were looking to do. If they were successful in getting this grant, the money would be available in the year 2012. After discussion, the committee made a motion to approve the concept and submittal of the grant application with the final design subject to approval of the Public Works Committee. Mr. Mayor, I would introduce the resolution for that.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a resolution to approve the concept and the submittal of a grant application that the Wilmer Design Center is working on. Further comment? Roll call?
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dacken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
Next item was in regards to our new wastewater treatment plant. And Craig Holmes was from Donahue and Associates was at our meeting and he presented a resolution to the committee, which outlined the city's intent to file a state funding request under the state's 2008 capital appropriations for the new wastewater treatment plant improvement project. Mr. Mayor, I would introduce a resolution that would allow the city to proceed to request state appropriations for the new wastewater treatment plant and authorize the city administrator to submit all requested information to the state.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a resolution to proceed to request state appropriations for the new wastewater treatment plant. Further comment? Roll call?
Councilmember Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dacken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
The next item, Mr. Mayor, was in regards to the wastewater treatment plant relocation project and the monthly report for May. And Mr. Holmes reviewed the project with us and Donahue and Associates continues to work on the detailed... The next item, Mr. Mayor, was in regards to the wastewater treatment plant, and Craig Holmes was from Donahue and Associates was at our meeting, and he presented a resolution to the committee which outlined the city's intent to file a state funding request under the state's 2008 capital appropriations for the new wastewater treatment plant improvement project. Mr. Mayor, I would introduce a resolution that would allow the city to proceed to request state appropriations for the new wastewater treatment plant and authorize the city administrator to submit all requested information to the state.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a resolution to proceed to request state appropriations for the new wastewater treatment plant and authorize the city administrator to submit all requested information to the state. Second. We have a motion and a second for a resolution to proceed to request state appropriations for the new wastewater treatment plant. Further comment? Roll call?
Councilmember Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dacken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dacken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dacken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
The next item, Mr. Mayor, was in regards to the wastewater treatment plant relocation project and the monthly report for May. And Mr. Holmes reviewed the project with us, and Donahue and Associates continues to work on the detailed design in order to reach the 75% complete goal, and they hope to do that in July. The facilities plan amendment was submitted to the MPCA, and the permitting process continues with a few other regulatory agencies. In addition to that, a flow monitoring program at three or four locations is planned to eliminate water, clear water infiltration and inflow into our system. And design is complete for phase one of the southern interceptor, and the easement acquisition is in progress to support a construction start in August for an additional interceptor line installation along Fifth Street southeast, north of 19th Avenue southeast to the existing wastewater treatment plant. This is for information only. The fourth item was a request from our fire department, from our fire chief, Marv Calvin, and they are looking for permission to do a training burn at 1028 East Highway 12. When the property is removed, it'll be used for a parking lot, and the permits have, will be obtained and asbestos inspections performed prior to any training being conducted. The burn would be planned for sometime between June 20th and November 1st. I would move the recommendation of the committee, Mr. Mayor, to approve the training burn at 1028 East Highway 12.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this training burn at 1028 East Highway 12. Comment? Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried?
The next item was in regards to removal of the fuel tanks at the old airport, and staff has acquired three quotes for removing those fuel tanks. The lowest quote was from Service West Contracting of Elk River, and it was for $11,300. The removal is planned to be funded through the Economic Development Initiative grant. So, Mr. Mayor, I would introduce the resolution to approve the project, award it to Service West Contracting in the amount of $11,300 and authorize the city administrator to sign on behalf of the city.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a resolution to award a contract to Service West Contracting in the amount of $11,300. Comment? We have a motion and a second for a resolution to award a contract to Service West Contracting in the amount of $11,300. Comment? I have a question for either our city administrator or city engineer. During one of these recent rainstorms, I was informed that we had some leakage out there. Has that been corrected or attended to, and what's your comment about that?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have addressed the problem in part. The remaining issue has more to do, in our opinion, with the design as opposed to the construction, and we're still dealing with that one.
So, by making, if the council approves this final payment, does that interfere with getting the proper work done out there in the future?
No, not at all.
Okay. And who's responsible for that then? For payments, possibly Everstrong or if it's a design problem?
We would hold the engineers and architects responsible for any additional improvements.
Okay. Any other comments? Roll call?
Councilmember Dacken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dacken?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
In April, bids were opened for the 2007 street improvements, Project 0701. That project includes accessible properties for which the hearing was held at the last council meeting, and the low bidder on the project is Dunick Brothers in the amount of I would introduce a resolution, Mr. Mayor, to accept the bid of Dunick Brothers Incorporated, subject to the city receiving no appeals to the assessment within the 30-day window and authorize the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for a resolution to award project number 0701 to Dunick Brothers Incorporated of Prinsburg in the amount of $1,055,537.06. Further comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Want to point out to the council that we did receive a notice of appeal. Forget the technical name they use, but it's ODP.
Limited Partnership.
Limited Partnerships, which is the Candy Entertainment Center. However, given the situation where we obviously have already begun construction on, or the reconstruction of 19th and on Fifth Street, it's staff's recommendation that the council award the contract, and then we'll have to deal with the appeal as we go along.
Are there comments here? Could that appeal from ODP or?
ODP.
Like Entertainment Center, could that affect, to a large extent, this contract? You know, the payment of this contract?
No, I don't recall the numbers right off the top of my head unless one of Kevin or Mel can recall. The 0701 is our general street improvement program, so the lion's share of it is not out at that site. Most of it is covered under the other contract. Our concern would be more, for example, on a reconstruction activity like Third Street, for example, but we have not received any notices of appeal from anyone else that might be involved in the assessment projects.
All right. Anything else?
Appeals.
Or Jim, you want to say something?
No, I said no appeals on Third Street.
Okay. All right. Roll call?
Councilmember DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dacken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dacken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
The last item on our agenda, it says it's for information only. We had a request from Bethel Church. They wanted to hold a Sunday service outside on 24th, and the proposal from them was that it would be held on Fifth Street from 8:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. And in our discussion, we felt we needed to have more information and discussion of fire lane issues, so no action was taken. I have talked to our fire chief and to our police chief. Bethel Church has come forward and said that they would keep the fire lanes open similar to the other events that are held in that same area. They would have about 200 to 250 people. Staff still has some reservations about this type of closure of the street, but it is consistent with the changes that, or the accommodations that we've done on the Bethel Market and also the Tuesday programs that are put on in front of Bethel Church. I don't know if the council, if the committee wants to take a look at that now or if you want to bring it back to the committee, but I believe, well, the 24th wouldn't, yeah, we would have a council meeting before that, but it wouldn't give them much time to plan for it if it's going to pass.
Well, let's hold on that and ask either our fire chief or police chief, what are the hesitations or what are the concerns that might interfere here?
Well, the concerns are the same concerns that I expressed when we talked about closing it for the two other functions that were previously mentioned, and that is that when you close the public street, you know, if you do have some type of an emergency and you need to get fire apparatus or emergency equipment in there, you have limited access for that. In talking with them today, they said they would keep the fire lanes open. So, again, then that becomes a council decision as to whether or not they want to have that use on a city street or not. And that comes up to a council decision. So, that's my opinions on it.
All right. Thanks, Marv. Chief Colsette, any concerns?
Well, they'd be the similar that I've expressed in the past about closing public streets and putting a large number of people in the public street using simple cones and wooden barricades. You know, we're always concerned about disoriented, disturbed, impaired, or confused drivers, especially in a commercial area like that, getting on that street and running over pedestrians and people that are in it. I've expressed that concern in the past, and that hasn't changed.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Council, do you wish to do anything here? Doug?
With Chief Colsette's comments, maybe Rich wants to address the liability on part of the city.
There's definitely exposure to the city at any time you close a public street for some kind of a social function.
Mr. Mayor, council members, it isn't just this Sunday morning service. I think generally speaking, the concern has been with the public safety aspect of it. We haven't had no incidents with the market on Thursday afternoon, but imagine the confusion if there was a fire and large trucks were trying to get in there, even if they did have a fire lane established. There's going to be that confusion and a bit of chaos on the part of the people in the street. The church service on a Sunday morning that's being requested is, you know, falls into the same category, but not nearly to the extent the farmer's market does. And I don't know if we've established any precedent by granting these uses of the public streets for the markets and the Tuesday noon function that they have down at Bethel. If you're going to not allow one of them, then you might want to consider not allowing any. Or if you're going to allow one, what's to say or how do you draw the line on not including others?
One of the questions I have is, is it significant that Bethel wants an outdoor service on the north side of the church when they have a big parking lot on the south and Is there anybody here that knows anything about that?
I think most of the Sunday morning churchgoers are using the parking lot, and that's why they don't ask for that area.
Council, do you wish to do anything tonight? Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd move to approve that request.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the request from Bethel Church to close Becker Avenue on, what's the date on this?
June 24th.
June 24th for a church service. Further comment? Councilmember DeBlick?
I guess, Mr. Anderson, would your motion include the fire lanes and the same safety precautions that we use for the market?
Yeah, that would be my understanding, yes.
Any other comments? Those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
There is no other business, Mr. Mayor. Unless there's questions from council members, I would move to file a minutes.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to file these minutes. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Next is a consideration of an ordinance to rezon certain lands from agriculture to residential to light business regarding the Gesh properties. Bruce, would you explain this, please?
Mayor Heitke, members of the council, Gesh properties from Wilmer, Minnesota have proposed rezoning their property that lies south of Olina Avenue, west of Lakeland Drive, and north of Wilmer Avenue that would include the YMCA property from Ag to R2, I'm sorry, from Ag and R2 to limited business. There's some office, medical, and professional uses that have been proposed in that area, and the Gesh family would like to move forward to develop that portion of their property. This matter came before the Planning Commission at their meeting last week, and the Planning Commission approved the rezoning. It's a recommendation of staff that the ordinance be introduced for a public hearing.
Thank you, Bruce.
Mayor?
Reese?
I would introduce the ordinance for hearing, but I would request that it be set for July 2nd. The reason for that is that's in the ward that I represent along with Councilmember Dacken, and I am going to be out of town from the 10th until the 20th of July, or of June, I'm sorry, and would not be able to attend the council meeting on the 18th. So, if it's acceptable, I would like to bring it to hearing on July 2nd. That's the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that's a motion. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second for a public hearing on July 2nd for this consideration of this ordinance to rezone the land? Councilmember Anderson?
Does anyone have a calendar? Is it the 2nd or the 1st?
It's the 2nd. July 4th is on Wednesday.
2nd. 4th is on Wednesday.
July 2nd.
July 2nd. Okay. Thank you.
Bruce, does that interfere with anything?
To the best of my knowledge, it would not.
Okay. Any comments from the council about this before the motion? Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quick question for staff, either Bruce or Mick. Does this, does delaying it for two weeks impact any timelines where the state is concerned?
To the best of our knowledge, it doesn't. We've had some contact with county officials, not state, to advise them that there was a possibility the hearing would not be held until July 2nd. But if that's the council's wishes, then, you know, they're just going to have to work around that schedule.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any other comments before the vote? Councilmember Fagerly?
If you take the YMCA property out of there, there's, boy, there's only about 20, 26, 27 acres left in that area, so. And the Y property more appropriately belongs in that limited business district than in the residential district that it's in now.
All right, thanks.
Just a point of clarification. If it, at the public hearing and then afterwards at the ordinance meeting, if it is moved to light business, does that mean it cannot be developed for residential?
If it is zoned to limited business, the only residential development that would be allowed in a limited business zone would be a residential use that would be on a second or third level of a commercial structure. The LB zone is primarily set up for office and professional uses. It does not allow retail businesses as a matter of course. It's very restrictive.
I guess in my mind, I always thought that more and more of that farmland would be turned over to residential housing, you know, in the future, but by going in this direction, the only housing would be on a second story of a professional or a retail business.
For that property lying south of Olina Avenue. Now, the Gesh family has a lot more property north of Olina Avenue that would be, that is shown as residential in the comprehensive plan. It'd be virtually everything between Olina Avenue and Minnesota Avenue to the north.
Have we had discussions in the city here with either your office or Steve Rehnquist and Kathy's office about developing that portion of the city into light business development?
Yeah, the planning commission discussed that matter at length probably about a year ago. I have not had that conversation directly with the county economic development people. Their focus is primarily industrial and.
Interesting.
All right. The motion on the table is for, to set a public hearing on July 2nd on this matter. Any other comments? Those in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The vote is seven to one, the motion carries. Next is a consideration of a preliminary plat called the Krupa Addition. Bruce?
The planning commission recently considered a one-lot commercial plat filed by Myron Krupa. It's a piece of ground that's proposed to be split off, the Wilmer Auto Plaza property that's located on the East Highway 12 Service Drive. This property would be at the west edge of that property. The planning commission approved the subdivision with the addition of some utility easements, and there were some other conditions attached to the development that are not pertinent to the plat. But the planning commission has approved the final plat, and it's a recommendation of staff that the council likewise approve the final plat.
Thank you, Bruce. Counsel?
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve of the final plat called the Krupa Addition. Further comment? Is this a simple motion, Kevin?
Yes, sir.
Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to take a moment and just recognize and welcome County Commissioner Richard Larson, who's been very, very patient and sitting here all night. Thanks, Richard, for coming to the meeting. I inquired earlier if he wanted to say something. He said, no, he didn't have enough meetings, so he wanted to catch an extra meeting this week, so, thanks, Dick. We're down to miscellaneous announcement of committee meeting dates. I have just one comment I want to make. I know that we just had graduation on Sunday at the high school, and there were, you know, hundreds of kids that are, you know, very glad to graduate and looking ahead to college, and many of them won awards, scholarships. But I'd like to point out too, because they're connected to the city, through our utilities, our utilities commission, there is a scholarship called the Tom Bovitz Memorial Scholarship, and it's given off, out to students who are graduating. And this year, the two recipients of the scholarship from the city utilities are two young men who we've heard of before, because they helped us with our All-America City Project two years ago in 2005. And one of them is Tom Odens, who received a $500 scholarship, and the second one is Brant Hagland, who received $250 scholarship for their college use. So, I'd like to just congratulate Tom and Brant and wish them very well, and I'm glad that they had the opportunity to apply and receive two scholarships from the Wilmer Municipal Utilities to help them with their college education. Good luck, fellows. All right. Council committee meeting dates. Finance.
Finance will meet Monday, the 11th, at 4:45.
June 11th, Finance, 4:45. Public Works, Public Safety.
The 12th, Tuesday, the 12th, 4:45.
Tuesday, June 12th, 4:45, Public Works, Public Safety. Community Development.
Community Development will meet June 14th, 4:45.
June 14th, Community Development, 4:45. Labor?
No meeting.
And then, when is the next City Planning Commission, Bruce?
The planning commission will meet on the 13th.
June 13th, City Planning Commission, at what time? 7?
7:00 PM, and we will be holding that meeting at the Fire Hall.
Okay, 7:00 PM at the Fire Hall. All right. And Bruce, as long as we're on, in front of the camera, explain what you explained to me about that meeting.
Mayor Heike, members of the council, the issue that was referred back to the planning commission tonight regarding the Earth Tech project, we'll go back to the planning commission, but it will not be a public hearing. The planning commission will have to work off staff comments and the previous record, or the record from the previous meeting, and they will have to reexamine that information and make a decision as to whether or not they can reconstruct their findings, or if they make the same recommendation back to the council. But I think it is important to note that that will not be a public hearing, and members of the public will not be given the opportunity to speak unless there's a direct question from a planning commission member, or unless the chair of the planning commission affords them that opportunity. The testimony was all taken at a public hearing previously.
Thank you, Bruce. Any other meeting dates to be announced here? Any other business to come before the council tonight? Councilmember Reese.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to be out of town for the next council meeting. I would be asked to be excused.
All right. Anything else? Councilmember Dockin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Minnesota World War II War Memorial is being dedicated on June 9th on the Capitol Mall. There are two buses that will be leaving Saturday the 9th at 7:30 from, I believe, the southeast corner of the mall property, but anybody, and it's a free ride, it's an all-day event, so any World War II vet or individual that would like to go down for that dedication, I'd encourage them to contact John Lindstrand or Wilmer Bus Service.
Jim, is this the memorial in Minnesota or Washington?
In Minnesota.
In Minnesota, okay. Two buses, free for veterans and probably family members?
Right.
In Minnesota, June 9th, leaving at 7:30 AM, coming back the same day.
Right.
Later in the evening. All right. Dedication of the World War II Memorial down on St. Paul.
Capitol Mall.
Capitol Mall, all right. Thank you, Jim. Anything else to come before the council tonight? Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, as mentioned earlier by Roberto, the event at Robins Island on Sunday, June 10th, from 3 till 7 o'clock, and that is a kind of a playdate, if you will, and that's something for anyone in the community to come out. It's an opportunity to visit and with folks from other cultures and, you know, just get to know each other on a fun basis.
Thank you, Steve. Anything else? If not, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
And it's been seconded. We are adjourned.